...on Monday, August 25th, we will have the roll call, please, Kristy.
Herring.
Here.
Fair.
Rezit.
Bannon.
Here.
Lovell.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Beatty. Hig.
Here.
Monson.
Rezit.
Mays.
Here.
Ehrichman. Ambrose. Blackard. Myers. Welch.
Present.
Harley.
Present.
Weller. And Ritter.
Okay, you have the agenda before you. It's a brief agenda tonight. I'll take a motion to accept the agenda in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Lovell, second by Hig. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. We'll move on to the presentation. I want to do a little introduction here first. I'm pleased to introduce to you tonight Mr. Mark Pruitt. He's the principal at the Power Bureau LLC. Mr. Pruitt's an adjunct professor with Northwestern's Master of Science in Energy and Sustainability Program. With more than 25 years of experience in energy, commodity supply, and energy efficiency markets, Mark assists organizations with energy planning, project evaluation, procurement processes, and contract negotiations. His current work focuses on advising communities on municipal aggregation and organizations on energy procurement issues. His experience through the electricity deregulation process in Illinois provides him with a long-range perspective on positioning, risk management, and opportunity development. Prior to founding the Power Bureau, Mark served as the first director of the Illinois Power Agency where he secured electricity supply on behalf of approximately 4.7 million residential and small commercial ratepayer accounts serviced by Commonwealth Edison and Ameren, Illinois. During his tenure, the agency not only established the hedging and procurement processes to secure energy, capacity, and transmission for ratepayers, but also reviewed and negotiated agreements for renewable energy, clean coal, coal gasification, energy efficiency, and demand response assets. Mr. Pruitt, thank you for joining us today. If you'd come forward, please.
Well, good evening. Thank you for your time and invitation to come this evening. I believe a few of you may have seen this presentation before, so I apologize if it's repeat. I do have one tidbit at the end, a piece of new information specifically about the Midwest and energy projects. And if you remind me at the end, I'll share that with you. So that's your golden nugget. Thank you for the introduction. I am from Illinois. I grew up in Schaumburg, which my older sister convinced me was German for "near the mall." Turned out to be pretty true, but not completely true. But I'm not one of those Illinois people. I went to school at Bradley University. So back then, gas prices were such that my '79 Dodge Colt needed to minimize the miles. So I always got off on 116 and headed cross-country. So there were many a time when I would stop in your fair city and left a few dollars, not many, a few dollars behind for food and gas and all the things that college students needed back in the 80s. So with that, go ahead and get started. I'm used to lecturing, so this is going to be fine. I can read that room. I'm usually not surrounded, though. So because the microphone is here, the screen is there, I might forget from time to time to address the crowd, so please don't take that personally. But again, thank you for the invitation. The agenda here is, looks detailed, and there's quite a bit to cover, but I'm not one to read slides. I really try to keep most of the slides of images, graphs, and the like, and then I talk over them and explain what I think is happening with them. I'm happy to field questions as they come up. We're covering a lot of territory, so what I've been told is that holding questions when you are in this type of an environment can be really hard, because then there's the next thing, and the next thing, and the next thing. So I would just recommend, unless your rules of order prevent it, to fire off any questions that you might have as you go along. I'll promise to keep things on pace. But we'll do a little overview, and then an Energy 101. This is just the stuff that I've learned over the past 30 years. We'll talk about some energy sector trends, what we see in the market today, some options for counties, and then I'll be open for discussion or questions. So you heard what my mother wrote about me. I'm a consultant. I'm a solo consultant, so there's just me. I'm an advisor. I work a lot with municipalities. One of my clients is the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, which represents the 270 municipalities in and around Chicago. Up here, wherever you see anything that's in green and underlined, that's a hot link to a website. And right up here, you see Energy Academy. We did about seven luncheon learns, seven one-hour sessions with municipal staff a few years ago to run through a lot of the materials that you'll be seeing here today. So of course, this presentation will be available to you, but you can also go there as well if you're so inclined. I was at the state, at the Illinois Power Agency, for a number of years. Before that, I was at University of Illinois, and I managed natural gas and electricity procurement. Before that, I worked on developing natural gas generating plants for VA hospitals in Chicago and southern Wisconsin. And, you know, I teach at Northwestern, which I always find amusing. They wouldn't let me in as a student, but I'm there now. So sometimes things change. And then have some work and research affiliations with Argonne National Lab and IIT. So 101 is a quick tour. These are the basics of the energy business. This is the most regulated business that I've ever experienced. I have some family who are in healthcare, and they argue this point with me, but I think I'm right. It's a highly regulated market, but there are market functions. So understanding those functions tells you where price comes from. If you know where price is coming from, then you know why investment decisions are made. Some recent developments, we're just talking about some changes in market conditions that are going to affect state policy that might affect what is happening within your county. And then the role for counties. What can counties do, or, as has been pointed out to me, what can they not do as it relates to energy development? So 101, I look at this as a supply chain, and if some of this is really elementary for you, I apologize, but this will build, and we'll be moving on to bigger and better things all the time. By way of reference, I try to, whenever possible, provide the source of the graphs in a footnote at the bottom of the page. Where it's convenient, I try to hyperlink those as well. So if you ever needed to pull those down, you could go and grab them and do with them what you will, make your own presentation. But the supply chain in electricity, let's work it backwards. Let's start from your home. There's a wire that goes to a meter that's at your house. That belongs to the utility. Goes to a pole. Usually, there's a transformer on that pole, and a line that goes to a substation somewhere in your neighborhood, somewhere in your part of town. That substation, also owned by the local utility. That substation is taking high-voltage electricity and bringing it down to low voltage, so that your equipment in your home operates. You don't burn out the refrigerator and the like, okay? So that high-voltage power is coming from the high-voltage transmission lines. If you see the giant towers that go along the highway with the great big lines coming down, that go lower during the summer because they're hot, those are transmission lines. Those are high voltage. Those are usually 69 KV, all the way up to 735 KV. Those are stepped-up voltage, right? Those themselves are connected to a substation further away, usually close to a power plant. That substation, connected to the power plant, steps up the voltage from the power plant. So it could be a small natural gas plant. It could be a nuclear power plant. It could be a solar farm, right? So all these electrons are moving, and they're being stepped up and stepped down, which means that there's an efficiency loss. So if you generate 100 megawatts of power at the power plant, you're probably only getting about 94 megawatts out at the house. Okay? So loss is a big part of how you do your planning for electricity. So you got those basics. Now the thing to layer on top of that is, how many substations? How many wires? How many meters? How many power plants do we need? You need as many as are necessary to meet peak demand on the hottest summer day or the coldest winter night. The system is built for reliability. I know some people think it's built for making money. Technically, no. I know some people think it should or should not be built for emissions. Technically, no. This entire system is built around reliability, and the way you go to reliability is designing to the maximum demand. Over time, demand grows, sometimes quickly, sometimes slowly, sometimes demand falls. If you have, if you've built up a great big system and demand falls, well, you have what are called stranded assets. You have made investments in equipment that's not being fully utilized. That's a challenge. However, the alternative is bad. If you do not have enough power plants, transmission lines, substations, distribution, and transformers, you can have a blackout or a brownout. And that's why this is such a big business, because all that equipment, all of that infrastructure is extremely, extremely expensive. So let's just take a look at PJM, which is the wholesale market that covers northern Illinois, parts of central Illinois, and extends all the way out to Maryland and New Jersey. You see the light blue line at the bottom? Well, that was the average load curve for PJM for the June 22nd through 24th period. I believe that was about, you know, that was the average based on history. Then you've got the previous record that was ever set. That's the red line, right? So you see the average based over a 30-year period. That's the light blue line. You see the red line? Well, that's the max. That's what it's never gone beyond before. Well, just take a look at that actual load, the black line that exceeds or goes above the red line, happened in June, happened again several times in July. And it just means that the PJM system is getting closer and closer to its peak, right? So based on what you know, you know a couple of things are going to have to happen, that if that trend continues, there's going to need to be more equipment, more power plants, more transmission, more money. Reliability is measured by a tight tolerance. So supply and demand for electricity, electricity is not easily stored at scale. I know that there are power walls. I know that there's batteries. I know that there's gravity-fed batteries. I understand all that. But they don't exist at scale, right? So our grid needs to generate almost exactly the amount, same amount of electricity as is consumed on a moment-by-moment basis. That's measured in hertz, and in our grid, there's a 1% tolerance roughly, where that balance can fall out, where the balance of supply and demand can fall out of balance, right? So if you're falling out of balance, if you have too little supply or too much demand, you have to bring things back into balance. So the system operator has to increase generation from a power plant, or encourage some consumers to reduce consumption. Same thing goes the other way. If I've got too much generation, I need to encourage consumers to consume more, or I need to cause those power plants to cycle down. Think about a nuclear power plant. They don't turn on and off real easily, right? So they can actually become a problem. Think of a wind farm. It goes on and off, unpredictable. Well, it's predictable on a day-ahead basis, but long-term, it's not a stable source of electricity. So the rest of the grid has to accommodate for that ebb and flow of electricity, right? Neither is good nor bad. And I should have mentioned this earlier, I'm agnostic, right? I teach policy and markets and regulation. I am really focused on what works, what's effective. The discussions about right and wrong, that's for the divinity school. That's two buildings down from where I teach. I don't go there. That's their business. I deal with effectiveness. And effectiveness means, how easy is this system to manage and maintain, and its cost? So you've got a large system, you need almost instantaneous balance. What happens if that doesn't happen? Well, we call you Texas. This is what happened in the blackout of Texas. You see here the blue line? That tracks the load balance that you see measured in hertz on the vertical axis. Remember, it needs to be close to 60, right? So you see, you started out at 1:23 in the morning on the, I think it was February, I'd have to go back and look, it was February 12th, I believe. It started out doing all right. Cold weather comes in, and then they start to experience problems. About 10 minutes into this cycle, they have 35,000 megawatts of generation capacity is no longer operable. And it was all kinds. It was wind, it was solar, it was gas. Their nuclear power plant down there went down because the pipe flow, the effluent for the water coming out of the reactor froze over, right? And if that water can't flow, they have to shut the, shut that power plant down because it's dangerous to overheat the nuclear power plant. Well, they had more and more outages. What do you think was happening during the cold spell to demand? Going up. Lot of electric heat in Texas, very common. Well, as you see, things cascaded very quickly, and I know this looks like a long graph. It's 30 minutes from the beginning of the event to really the pit of despair there in the pink, over there below the 59.4 hertz level. It was at that point where the grid operator for Texas, organization called ERCOT, Electric Reliability Organization of Texas, had to make a decision. If they, by their own rules, if that period of imbalance at that level exceeded for another five minutes, they would have had to turn down or blackout, manage blackout of the entire ERCOT grid, which I'm told by regulator friends of mine would have taken weeks to restart. Because, remember, supply needs to match demand. So if you're starting from zero, how difficult is it to bring consumer demand on a scale with power plants? Very difficult, okay? They were able to avoid it, and the weather passed, and they were able to get more generation online, but they still had to have rolling blackouts. And people think, oh, rolling blackouts, that's a failure of the grid. No, that was the last tool that the grid operator had to maintain the remainder of the grid. They would sacrifice 20% of the grid to maintain the other 80%. Gets back to what I was trying to express earlier, that reliability matters. If they can't get reliability for 100%, they'll try to get 100 reliability for 90% or 80% or 70%. That's the imperative. So that's the challenge. It's rather dramatic, but it just lays out how complex this entire situation can be. So who is in charge of doing all this balancing? Well, and from, this is my clue that engineers built this system, because it's called, it's for balancing. They call them balancing authorities. Flashing. Balancing authorities, at one time, were all the individual utilities throughout the country. You may have had a Pontiac municipal utility at one point in time. I don't know. But there still are a lot of municipal utilities in Illinois. There's about 35 or 42 of them. I believe it's somewhere in that range. Over time, though, they said, you know what? Us managing our municipal electric entity, it's a lot of work. We're not getting economies of scale. Let's merge our balancing authority with the surrounding towns, or the investor-owned utility that's operating two miles down the road. And so that's where you went from having essentially thousands of balancing authorities down to some number of dozens. In Illinois, northern Illinois is part of the PJM Balancing Authority. You see it over there towards the right. And central southern Illinois is part of Mid-Continent ISO. Mid-Continent ISO goes all the way up into Canada, all the way down to Louisiana. So these are the organizations that are determining which power plants operate at what level, and they are the ones who are responsible for establishing reliability in your system. And here's the color coding. So you can see Mid-Continent ISO, they're in the middle, multiple states. All the squiggly boundaries of those represent the boundaries of the utility service territories of all, the service territories of all the utilities that are members of MISO, and then PJM. New York ISO is all within one state. Northeast ISO, ERCOT is most of, but not all of Texas. California ISO as well. So it's helpful to have this background, because in my business, we throw out acronyms all the time. So when we say PJM, or MISO, or ERCOT, or California ISO, now you know you've cracked the code. You know we're talking about these organizations. So not only do these organizations manage which power plants are operating, but the next question I always had is, okay, well, how do they do that, right? Do they, do they manual, have a big control room and levers and buttons? Do, you know, is it, is it, is it where they actually control the power plants? The answer's no. Power plants are owned by utilities and independent power producers, right? They are all connected to transmission lines that run throughout the regions. The ISOs are essentially, they don't own, but they control the transmission lines. So if you control the transmission lines, you control what power plants have access and have the ability to sell power. It's fine to have a power plant, but it's useless to have a power plant unless you can sell your electricity. The transmission lines are the backbone of the system, and all power must pass through the transmission lines. The ISOs control which power plants operate when. How do they do it? They use an auction process. So every day, today at 2 o'clock, PJM and MISO contacted every power plant within their service territories and said, give us an hourly bid for how much power you can generate each hour for tomorrow and at what price. They receive all those bids, and they rank them in from lowest price to highest price. That's what this graph is trying to express. So you've got bidder A with a pretty low price. You've got bidder B with a little bit higher price. They stack them all up, and they say, well, for the hour of noon to 1 o'clock tomorrow, I need the amount of demand that's represented by the yellow dotted line there that goes up to the little marker at the top that says "demand," right? We need, let's just call it 10,000 megawatts. That's what we predict we need for tomorrow, between noon and 1, based on history, weather, and how we know our system. Great. They've lined up all these bids, and they say bidder D is the one that got us right to 10,000 megawatts. That is the marginal bidder. Bidder D gave us a price. The price that bidder D gave is the price that is paid to bidders A, B, C, and D. So this means that even if bidder A bid in $20 a megawatt hour, and bidder D bid in $50 a megawatt hour, everybody who cleared in the auction gets 50. This is why prices are hugely volatile in electricity markets, because this auction process happens on a day-ahead basis, and then on the day of generation, it happens every five minutes. Lot of bidders, lot of volatility. And again, this is selection based on price. What the ISO is trying to do is to get the highest level of reliability at the lowest price. And they're using price as the mechanism to draw in more, more supply. If they have a lot of demand, they're going to move further along the line. So let's say it's between 3 and 4 o'clock, and demand is higher because more conditioning is running. Well, in that hour, bidder F might be the marginal provider, and bidder F will set the clearing price. Make sense? Okay. I always think it's cool. But what it does, it brings volatility. If you look on the left, here are the prices for PJM's, the commodity, the dollars per megawatt hour or dollars per kilowatt hour. There are 1,000 kilowatt hours and a megawatt hour. So you see that prices change all the time. These are hourly. And you see that sometimes they spike. In this case, you saw sometime January, February of 2014, there was a huge spike. That was the first polar vortex in PJM territory. And you see, it drove prices up to a little bit better than $250 a megawatt hour. Then you see, moving forward to January, beyond 2022, and then into 2023, we had a little bit of a war. You know, why would a war in Ukraine cause a price spike in northern Illinois? Well, because the price that the bidders pay, I'm just going to go back one, the immediate impact of the war in Ukraine was not an impact on supply and demand of electricity, but on supply and demand of natural gas. Natural gas is a fuel that's used by a lot of power plants in the region. So if the cost of natural gas goes up, what happens to the price that those natural gas plants can bid into the system? It goes up as well, right? So the price of power is tied to the price of fuel. So if coal prices go up, uranium, natural gas, propane, fuel oil, if all those go up, the resulting impact is that prices for electricity will go up. What does that mean for generation that does not have, that does not have fuel? Solar, wind, hydro? Their prices for those assets aren't based on fuel because they have no fuel. Those are based on the cost to operate those plants. So usually, when you see this rank order of pricing, you see wind, solar, and nuclear as bidders A, B, and C. And then it's, the clearing price is usually set by natural gas, then coal, then oil. That's the normal order of things. Look on the right, and you see capacity prices. So when you get your, when you say, how, well, I'll ask you, how much does electricity cost? No one can say too much. Is it 5 cents kilowatt hour? 10 cents? 8 cents a kilowatt hour? Yeah. Great. So we're used to seeing that. That price, that 8 cents a kilowatt hour, is actually the sum of three subcomponents. One is the energy commodity. That's the actual electrons being delivered. The next is a capacity charge. A capacity charge is a special charge that's paid to all the power plants within a region that's, that is a payment. It's a reservation charge that says, will you promise to be able to generate at maximum output if we call upon you at one year, two years, and three years into the future? And if they say yes, and they qualify, they get a capacity payment. Capacity is a hard concept. Let me go back to my childhood. Anyone been to Woodfield Mall? Okay. How big is the parking lot? Do you need all those parking spots every day of the year? You need them for what, Black Friday?
Yeah.
Okay. That's capacity. Capacity is meeting your maximum demand, right? So capacity payment is paying those power plants, say, look, if you're selected in the auction, we're going to pay you for the hours that you generate. That's the deal. However, we'll make a separate payment to you if you promise that you will be able to operate if we call upon you in an emergency to maintain grid reliability. As you see, that price is also pretty volatile. And if you look all the way to the right, you see that things went parabolic this last year?
Yeah.
So if anyone has had a power bill that's gone up since June, that's why. It's not the commodity, it's the capacity. And it will go, and for PJM, it will go up a little bit more, starting again next June. And that's because, as, you know, you all know auctions, what, what happens if you have more demand than supply? What happens to price? Goes up, right? So the, it's relatively difficult to bring more supply online to build a power plant as a multi-year activity. So if you're experiencing a huge increase, or a perceived huge increase in future demand, and it's reflected in price, it's going to take you a few years for new generation to come online to match that demand. And during that period of time, prices are going to be high. The solution to high prices is more supply. That's just how the power markets work, just like most other markets. Let's talk a little bit more about capacity. I know this is really busy, but this is just showing you the price pattern in PJM over the years, to give it a little bit more granularity. These are auction prices, clearing prices. They're set once a year. In theory, they're supposed to be set this year for delivery three years into the future. But again, as you can see, off to the right, prices went from $28.92 a megawatt day in 2024 to 25, to $269.92, then to 220...
329.
329, thank you, and 37 cents, right? Do they keep going higher? Could be. Could be. If you close more power plants or you have more actual demand, that price will go higher. The PJM market operator, the MISO market operators believe that they're, the best that they can do is to set out a price that attracts investment in new capacity. Okay. Pop quiz for you. Who in Illinois, which body can order new power plants to be built? Trick question. No one. Which body in Illinois is responsible for energy planning? Double quote, none. Which some people criticize. I tend to think it means that Illinois is a faith-based organization. There has not been a concerted energy plan in Illinois since I started in 2000 in this Maybe that's part of the problem. Could be. If you, what's the saying in investments? Most people don't fail to plan. Most people don't plan to fail. They fail to plan. And it's not like a centrally planned approach is always best. I'm not saying that. But planning does expose you to these possibilities and it allows you as a policymaker to say, what should we do if this happens? What tools do we have? Yes?
So in 24, 25, we had a 28.92 per hour price. How do you, help me understand, how do you go from 28.92 to 269.92 an hour? Like that?
Well, you have, in PJM service territory, you start making it very difficult for older coal plants to continue to operate and they retire. Older gas plants, natural gas plants as well.
Which are all consistent energy?
Sometimes called baseload or dispatchable. We've had nuclear power plants go offline over years. So it's, what I would caution you to say is, did something change that year? No. Usually it's a slow-moving process. When you take a look at how many assets have retired over the years and what's replaced them, it looks like the number should be level, but it really isn't because the replacement capacity is the type of assets that are not dispatchable. Wind and solar have a role, so this is not a criticism. But you don't know, you can't turn them on and off with the same level of certainty as gas and coal. Now, gas and coal assets break down too. That's fine. When they break, we're not talking about breaking down, we're talking about normal operations. And in PJM and MISO, when you have 100 megawatts of nuclear, they stipulate, okay, if you have 100 megawatts of nuclear, you can bid in 94 megawatts into the capacity option. Right? They figure 6% of the time you might not be operating. If it's wind, it's maybe 30%. So if you had 100 megawatts of wind, you're credited for 30 megawatts of capacity. If it's solar, it's something lower than that. Right? So it's not a one-for-one. So if you see a solar farm going on and it's up and it's 200 megawatts, that's great. But it's limited. It's not the same as a 200-megawatt natural gas or diesel or other plant. Again, I'm not into better or worse or right or wrong. It's just effectiveness and the tool. Right? So enough about this. No one likes to do math in public. What this also does, and this is part of my nerdiness that I enjoy, that part of the business, are that there's these tools. So when you're setting these prices all the time, they're not market-wide. They're localized because you have local networks of transmission that connect certain load, you know, consumers with generation. You know, just because you have a lot of nuclear power plants in northern Illinois does not mean, it makes no difference at all for consumers in Philadelphia. Right? It doesn't work that way. The markets are typically more localized than that. So when you run these auctions, you get different prices in different regions based on the local demand and the local supply. And this heat map just shows that at the same moment in time, you can have widely varying prices throughout the wholesale markets. So it's a curiosity, but think about this from an economic development standpoint. If I'm going to be putting in a new factory of X and I want the lowest power price as possible, I'm going to go to maps like this and say, show me what the average prices are in different parts of the country because I'm interested in low price of energy and I need to balance that against cost of labor, cost of land, cost of water, transportation, all these other things. And it's this localized price of energy that goes into that site selection process. So this is material for some of the planning that's done at the local level. Just going to switch now to new project, I'm sorry, I'll stop. Does anyone, you feel like you learned something on the energy markets? So prices change, they're based on auctions, and the goal is reliability. Okay. Those are the three takeaways. I'm just going to flip over here to new project development and how do these power plants get built? So sometimes we use different names for the same type of activity. You, as a county board, may have project developers and independent power producers coming to you seeking zoning and permitting and that type of thing. Just to kind of give you some definition around what those terms mean, a project developer is usually early-stage developer. They find the site, they find the interconnection, they find the landowner, they put together the deal. Right? They say this can be, this can have good market value if it's built. Usually, not always, but usually, the project developer will then sell that project to an independent power producer, which typically is a larger entity with their own balance sheet, relationships with banks, and they can build the asset that was prepared and laid out by the developer. Now, sometimes project developers build and own their own assets. Sometimes independent power producers go and develop their own assets. Right? So there's no hard and fast rules here. But this might be, I had somebody at the conference come up to me, they said, Mark, we've had the same project come before the board three times and there's three different names of the companies. Same project, different companies. And I said, well, that's probably because it started with a project developer who then put together a special-purpose entity for that project and then that got sold to the developer. Right? So that, just trying to demystify why, and it's not shady, it's just, this is how the industry works. So here's the names of some project developers, here's some names of independent power producers. You might see some familiar names. There are Tenaska, Invenergy, Nextera, NRG on the IPP side, Cypress Creek, Kindle, NextAmp, Saltage on the developer side. So like I said before, it's fine to build a power plant, but it's useless unless you can connect to the transmission. Right? Transmission system gets your power to the consumer and ultimately, who pays for everything? Consumers. So you have to connect to the consumers. This is a graph that gives you an idea of how much capacity is in the queue. The queue is the line, people who have, or projects that have applied to PJM for interconnection. Right? So you go back to 2010, you had a certain number of winds, a little bit of solar, some gas, and then some other, maybe batteries or others. And it stayed pretty low through the early 20 teens. And then starting in 2018, 19, and 20, boy, things changed. Look at the volume of solar that is applying in the queue, as well as batteries and solar and batteries. And again, not about good and bad, but do you think that, so when something goes into the queue, they're saying, PJM, we would like to connect this asset to that transmission line. And PJM says, okay, does it threaten reliability? How will the system operate with that extra capacity? Do you think it's easier or more difficult for PJM to model out an interconnection for a nuclear plant or a natural gas plant or a wind or solar plant?
Easier to model out? Nuclear?
Yeah. Because it's more steady. It's either steady or it's dispatchable. It can go on or off. The wind and solar is just by nature a little bit more complicated. Right? Because there's variability. And the whole issue with PJM again is maintaining that balance on the system. So they have to do a lot more modeling, a lot more work to validate that a solar or wind asset is going to be able to deliver into the system without throwing system reliability out of balance. But with all those applications, the batting average is pretty bad. So this is a study from Lawrence Berkeley Laboratory, and I don't know if you could see the graphic very well, but it's broken out different regions of the country. And what Lawrence Berkeley did is they went back over the past 10 years and they said, how many projects have applied to interconnect to these transmission grids in these regions? And then they came up with the average, or the percentages of those projects that actually got built. So you see, let's look at MISO in the middle. There's a 21% and then in brackets, 15%. In their study, 21% of projects over a 10-year period were approved and deployed for interconnection. One in five. However, only 15% of the capacity that was proposed was installed. So less than one in five of the, so a project could be 200 megawatts, it could be 50 megawatts. Right? So they're looking at it from the number of projects measurement standpoint and number of megawatts standpoint. So another way to look at this is to say, over the past 10 years, in MISO, only 15% of all the megawatts of generating capacity that's been proposed actually got built. Same thing for PJM. 24% of the projects were approved, only 15% of all proposed capacity was installed.
Why would that be?
Well, there's a lot more projects in the queue, so it takes a lot longer to get an approval. You don't necessarily always get a real positive approval. When PJM comes back or MISO comes back, they never say, no, you can't connect. They say, you can connect, but it's going to cost you X number of millions of dollars because now you, this project, need to upgrade these substations and these transmission lines to be able to accommodate your project. And many times that price is very high and it kills the economics for the project or the approval process takes now about seven years and the developer doesn't have the money to continue to wait for that project to get approval. They're holding the bag on the cost of land leases, equipment reservations, staff for that full seven years without knowing that, what that approval cost is going to be. So a lot of projects fall out of the queue.
So if you go back to the previous slide and you look at what's in the queue, and this is just me, it looks like you have more inconsistent applications, meaning inconsistent power, not a regular, you know, a nuclear bam, wham, you've got power, it's there. And it looks like to me, all these applications that are in the queue, not all of them, of course, but are more inconsistent.
Well, yes. I think that the nature of your observation is true. These are variable output resources. Right? So again, I'm trying to stay faithful to my neutrality. I just don't want people to get bent out of shape. But you're right, there's a lot more of these types of projects going in volumetrically. Right? But the reality is that the system for approving them is actually slower based on how they operate and it's showing itself in the 10-year average of how many projects are actually getting built.
Exactly.
Yeah. It's very taxing. I'm sorry, I probably spoke over you.
..................................................................................................................................................................
That's a really, that's a really good question. And there would be a cost to that. Right? So, so, well, yeah, but...
Ultimately, who pays the bill?
Right. Consumers.
Exactly.
That's the first lesson I give my students. Who pays? Consumer, always.
Do you have the other question?
Yes, sir.
What is PJM?
I believe, well, for Commonwealth Edison Service Territory, I believe it's 23,000 megawatts. That's their peak demand. So it's a good portion, but it's not the majority of PJM. PJM, I think in total, is 163,000.
Can you go back to that direction a little bit more?
Sure. Oh, there it is.
So the red line is that PJM has pretty much...
Well, the red line is just showing the maximum that occurred. So not each year. It's just saying that at one point over this period of time, it got up to that level.
So many years or whatever, it's got that high.
Yeah.
So even when, so where is that compared with the last 2, the last, basically everything don't, you can't get any way of your capacity?
Well, this is measuring demand. Right? So this is what the consumers are requiring from the system. I think what you might be looking at is the impact here for capacity prices, meaning that if all of that, all that solar, all that wind, even on a discounted basis, plus the wind or the nukes and nuke, natural gas, if they all came online, that'd be a lot more capacity. If you increase the supply, what would happen to the price? It'd go way down. So it does self-correct because it's market-based pricing. Just because you're in the market, just because you're connected to the transmission system, maybe this is what you're going towards. Just because you're connected to the transmission system doesn't mean you're going to get paid because you still need to win in the auction. So...
It's just that, so it's still getting paid.
But only if you're selected through the auction process. So it's not automatic. You have to bid in. And that's why the price bounces around is that you've got compete, competition, people trying to beat, you know, that marginal provider and no more. They're trying to get there. So when you have too much capacity, the people with the lowest offers, they clear, everybody else gets zero. When prices go up, that means basically everybody gets paid. So it's not a guarantee that if you build it and get it connected, you've got a money-making machine. That's when the work starts, is you have to be that much, you have to be marginally less expensive than the next power plant in the system to be able to clear. Because if you don't clear, you're not allowed to put power on the system.
And that's a lot.
Yeah. Makes it tough. Yes, sir?
Battery, is that new production or is that just storage?
Oh. Which one? That one? Okay.
Battery, is that new production or is that just storage?
This is just measuring capacity. So it's saying it's a battery that's a reservoir for power that's delivered from the remainder of the grid.
That's power, that's...
It's not new production, it's merely storage. Correct.
That's what the battery is...
Correct. It's a balancing.
That's...
Well, it will help the system as long as there's some energy there to charge it. Right? Same thing with hydrogen. You know, the thing I have a challenge with, I'm old and I can still remember things, but new things, eh, sometimes tough. But hydrogen is not energy. Hydrogen is storage. So you need to utilize energy to produce the hydrogen. So all these things have, you know, some cause and effect. They need some type of inflow to be able to motivate their outflow. For a natural gas plant, it's natural gas coming in, it's combusted, electricity goes out. Battery, energy comes in from the grid and then is released on demand. Solar, sun hits the panel and it generates electricity. A lot of the batteries, my understanding, are applications now, it's becoming more prevalent for solar resources to be paired with batteries because now you can take some of that midday peak generation from the solar, put it into the battery, and then extend out the number of hours that you can deliver electricity to the grid.
...........................
Yeah. I think that's right. And what they're trying to express here is, you know, they're trying to pick a metric. You know, and megawatts of nameplate capacity is the metric that they...
..................................................................
When these guys get built and sometimes they sell out, do they sell out to bigger companies? Does that give them a better advantage on bidding when it comes in?
When they sell out what?
Say you got a bunch of developers building, and then they turn around and sell the project. Does that give the guy that's the biggest, you know, most supplied, does that give them better contracts for bidding or not?
Not really.
It don't help?
Because it's, all prices are still determined by the market. Now, you might get, so the total price you pay is energy supply, capacity, and then transmission, right? That's usually what goes in there. Also embedded in there are transaction costs. So when I advise clients, they say, well, I want to buy in bulk. I'm like, of course you do. And they say, how much am I going to save? I say, you're going to save transaction costs. You're going to reduce sales commissions, profits, and that's about it because everybody's buying from the same market. If you could adjust your consumption and use electricity only at night, you'd have a lower price because the price for power at night is lower. Yeah. Is this okay? We're doing okay time-wise? Okay. Give me the hook if I... Okay. Want to talk about some trends? Now that you've got the basics, you're asking the right questions, I think you're ready. So, more math. You may have heard that changes in federal policy are likely going to have impacts on energy project development. And that's a term, you know, those are terms I've seen in a lot of news stories. It's kind of helpful to maybe diagram this out. So if I'm going to build a solar farm, I'm going to finance it. I'm going to borrow the money, maybe put some of my equity in, but I'm going to borrow most of the money to build the plant. And the willingness of the lender to give me the money is going to be based on the revenue that I'm going to be able to bring from that plant. I need to cover my costs plus some profit, and that's a good project. That'll get financed. Okay. So how am I going to make money with this solar farm? Well, this is a capital stack for a community solar project. These are good general numbers, and you can see that energy payments, you know, the revenue earned by pushing electricity out and selling that electricity, that's the majority of the revenue, about 57%. Then selling renewable energy credits, those are the environmental goodness of the solar, the non-emissions basis of the solar that the Ameren and ComEd and Mid-American Energy will buy from community solar projects under the Illinois RPS. That's responsible for about 19% of the revenue. Then there's depreciation, investment tax credit, I circled that in red, that's the federal policy you're hearing about. And then reserve interest. Reserve interest is just money that they keep in the bank for operations that earns interest. Not a big deal. The investment tax credit pays, in the old days, it was a flat 30% of the construction cost of a project at project energization. So if you had a $5 million project within the first six months or so of project operation, you would get a check, basically, a check for $1.5 million. It's a tax credit. That's revenue, right? Because that tax credit is marketable. It can be sold. Usually, they sold them to a bank at a discount, and that's what's used to foster development, project development. So when you hear about the federal government and the reconciliation bill, or one big beautiful bill, I've heard it called both, this is the change. What happens now is that all projects, if I understand the IRS guidance, all projects, wind and solar projects that are not completed of construction by next fall will not be eligible to get that investment tax credit. So if you have a $5 million project and you're losing 11% of your revenue, what do you do? Well, you find another revenue source, you get a better deal for selling your energy and renewable energy credits, you reduce the cost of the project, or you drop the project. Since July 1, July 1 through July 31 roughly, if my math was correct, MISO, interconnection queue, experienced a withdrawal of over 200 projects amounting to about 56,000 megawatts of projects that I believe were largely a direct result of this policy change. For good or bad, it means that those projects could not survive, and that's probably something that might reflect its way down here to the local level, right? You might have a change in the tone and tenor of the developer community. Let's think of, let's put ourselves in their shoes. If I have until next fall to get something built, or I lose 11%, what does that mean for my sensitivity to time and delays? Yeah, it's just not going to be good, right? Or I'm just going to throw in the towel and go back to what I did before I got into renewable energy, right? So you might have projects that simply drop, right? They disappear. I'm not saying it's good or bad, I'm just saying it's a material change, right? And it's going to change the life of the developer and it's going to then have an impact on you. I am not reading this to you. There's a link. You can go there. So while the bill takes away the tax credit for a lot of the clean energy, it has quite a few benefits for fossil fuel development. So I think that you can see, again, it's policy. I don't know if it's effective or not because it hasn't been in effect. But these are all largely designed to promote fossil fuel development and operation. So we'll see what happens. That's the federal level. What's happening at the state level? Well, in Illinois, consumers served by Commonwealth Edison, Ameren Illinois, and Mid-American Energy pay about $585 million a year towards the Illinois Renewable Portfolio Standard. It's on your bill down in the taxes and fees section. It's about $5 a megawatt hour. That $585 million is money collected by the utilities that then they are committed to using to purchase renewable energy credits from projects, wind and solar projects that are selected by the Illinois Power Agency, that's the agency I used to work for, and so ordered by the Illinois Commerce Commission, right? So you've got kind of a daisy chain of events here. The power agency has identified that $585 million is not enough to meet the state's goals of getting to 25% by 2025, which they didn't meet, or getting to 40% by 2030, which probably will not meet, or the higher goals that go out year after year after year. And you see that from the agency, they put those in the brightly colored bars going out to 2043. What they're reflecting in the green dashes is the end of your balance in the Renewable Portfolio Standard if those rec volumes were met. And you see it goes down to about $12 billion of deficit. So you can look at this two ways. One way is they're billions of dollars short, they're never making it. They're never going to make that level of renewable energy credit purchases. The other is they're not going to spend $12 billion they don't have, are they? And the answer is no. They won't. But this just goes to show that at some point, pretty soon, 2028, 2027, 2029, right around there, the amount of dollars coming in matches the amount of dollars going out, and at that point, the power agency is going to have to say, the cupboard's bare. There's no more money to purchase renewable energy credits. Renewable energy credits, 18.5% of revenue on that community solar farm. So you're taking away 18.5% plus 11.2%, now you're coming up closer to 30% of project revenue now off the board, or off the board somewhere in the foreseeable future. Things are getting tough, right? And people are feeling it. And again, this is not me, this is the agency, and I applaud the agency for putting this out there because this is clear guidance for policymakers that, look, you said you wanted this goal, it's going to cost money, no, it's not free, right? What do you want to do? Remember how I said Illinois is a faith-based organization? No more. There's a resource adequacy study that's going on right now. By December, Illinois EPA, Illinois Commerce Commission, Illinois Power Agency, and Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity are going to issue a report to identify, can Illinois's demand be met with domestic generating capacity? Especially capacity that is preferred by state policy as enacted under the Climate Inequal Jobs Act, or CEJO. And are there gaps? And if there are gaps, what are the costs and, what are the options and costs of filling those gaps? So this is good. I think it's good for them to do this because there needs to be some clarity in terms of, hey, you know, if you like reliable, if you like the lights that turn on, you know, maybe you need to think about it every once in a while. There's also another process called the REAP, R-E-A-P, Renewable Energy Access Plan. This is a process being run in its second cycle by the Illinois Commerce Commission, and it is designed to identify what are the barriers that prevent more wind and more solar from coming online in Illinois to support the Illinois RPS. So what they've done is they've identified certain portions of the state that should be prioritized for smoothing the way for more development of those types of resources. You can find it up there. So that's at the state level. What about the market? What's going on in the market? Well, this is PJM's projected load growth, and you had the question earlier of what's changed? Well, this is a big part of it, and I think a lot of people have heard of this, that take a look at the graph on the top, and you see the projection, the forward projection of ComEd's summer peak demand, and then, you know, for the new forecast is in blue, last year's forecast is in red. You might notice that things are a little bit different. Why are they different? Skip down to the lower graph, and you'll see that, well, they're expecting a little bit of industrial load growth in the dark color, and the rest of it from data centers. Now...
Huge energy.
Could be, possibly.
Eaters.
Could be. Here's my knowledge about data centers, is that, yes, they're huge, they're big, but they're not going to be built unless there's capacity in that market. I've had clients who were looking at sites in Ohio, and we were working with the local utility, local utility said, yeah, we can hook up your transmission line 18 months. Sounds great. This is fantastic. When can we expect the flow of 300 megawatts of capacity to this site? They said, oh, seven years. No data center is going to wait for seven years, they're going to go and find somewhere else. So there's some debate. I'm not saying PJM's wrong. I understand their projection. If you go into how they did this, it's very deliberate and I think sober calculation. But the reality is, I don't think a dat, there cannot be that many data centers coming in unless there's capacity to match that, right? So it will balance itself out. I think there's a little bit of alarmism in some quarters that the data centers are going to kill us. No, they're not going to take electricity from grandma. If the capacity is not there, they're not going to get built, right? But they will keep coming into the market as capacity is built, which means you're always going to be on the edge of supply and demand balance, which means that your price is always going to remain high. Yes?
We saw that for some clients in Ireland. Ireland required data centers to have 110% of their capacity requirements secured by onsite power generation before they could connect to the grid. Now, I don't know what meeting you were at, but I can tell you from a data center perspective, they still want to connect to the grid. They want that reliability. So I don't think you can expect them to operate on an islanded basis. But yes, bringing their own capacity would be probably a good start, right? And it's a way of them to not simply take off of the grid, but also help support that grid.
At least not be such a draw.
Sorry?
At least not be such a draw.
Right. But remember, supply and demand. What if that onsite power plant's not operating, and that data center wants to keep drawing? Right? You're still going to need the capacity from somewhere. They haven't consulted me on that. Oh. Oh, do, is, we need to repeat the question?
Oh, I asked, I think, ComEd, I heard a rumor that they're buying land and put a data center up there by the nuclear plant in Braidwood. I didn't know if you'd heard anything on that or not.
I have not, but I know that there's a lot of interest in data center development in northern Illinois. And ComEd, in response to that, has, I believe, last month, filed a new rate proposal at the Commerce Commission to outline how they plan to deal with data center development. So we'll see what comes out of that process. But again, you know, these are all market developments. Everybody's responding to this, and it's one of the first times in, I don't know, 30 years that what I do is interesting to my children. So that's a blessing. So, at the same time that they're, you know, I've given you all the, kind of the gross financial model for renewables. I don't want those who are supportive of renewables to be losing, you know, sleep over this. That the emissions profile in the U.S. is improving, that there is a migration towards lower emitting resources, as you see in the graph here, might not be fast enough for some. I understand that. But I don't necessarily know that things are going to reverse and start going the other way because to build a new coal plant, frankly, is a very expensive venture. And with, you know, as I tell a lot of my clients, today is not forever. If someone came to me and said, I want to build a new coal plant, Mark, what do you think? I'd be like, well, you know, in this administration, maybe, but your coal asset is probably going to live for 50 or 60 years. You got to think about what that regulatory environment is. So I don't know that that comes about, but I didn't want all this to be doom and gloom for folks who are doing wind and solar. Many of them are my professional colleagues and clients. I do work for fossil fuel folks as well as renewable energy folks. So I just wanted this graph here to give that nationwide perspective. So let's talk about counties. This is a very, I read a lot. So this is a study from the Brookings Institution, and I thought it was, it's probably sponsored by certain parties, but they go into NREL data. NREL is the National Renewable Energy Laboratory. You see it cited in the footnote there. So if you look at the distribution of local ordinances by primary guideline type in 2024 for wind and solar, you see the topics that are addressed at the county level for each of these technologies. So noise, setbacks, height, you know, all the things that go into an ordinance. Okay? So there's lots of things that go in there. Take a look at the leading cause of canceling wind and solar projects between 2016 and 2023. Local ordinances and zoning, all the way over on the left, moving all the way to the right for lack of funding. So you may have an indication as to why some changes in state policy have been made. Again, I'm not in the right and wrong business. I'm into cause and effect, how things work. I'm telling you as a casual observer that county governments matter. They matter a lot. And sometimes they're viewed negatively, other times positively. And this is why the pressure, I don't know if you've dealt with a lot of pressure. I know some county folks, and they feel a lot of pressure sometimes on these energy-related topics, not just wind and solar, but also for natural gas, for data centers. I mean, it's all part of the same thing. My thesis currently is that data and energy are basically the same thing. So you're going to have the same problems regardless if it's a data center, a wind farm, a solar farm, or a natural gas plant. It's all the same. Right? So when it comes to county governance, that's why you have things like Public Act 102, 1123. You may have heard of it. Right? So I am not an attorney, and I will not opine on how to meet, exceed, circumscribe, or circumnavigate the law. I will tell you, though, and I'm not going to read this for you. You have a county attorney to do that, I hope. But it goes on and on and on in terms of what you can and cannot do. Mostly cannot do. And I just wanted to give you that background as to why did this happen to us? Why don't they like us? Well, it's because someone in Springfield, well, what, I spent some time in Springfield. Couple of sayings I remember from way back then. One is, if you're not at the table, you're on the table. And I think that things like this happen because a lot of entities have a vested interest in getting their projects done. And if the reality is that they're getting friction at the local government level, well, they're going to try to smooth that out. And if they can't get it done at the local level, they'll kick it up to the next level of government. So I would say that veto session is probably going to be pretty active this year. That's what I've heard. And, you know, we'll see what happens. But right now, there are negotiations that are ongoing. I don't know if you're involved in them or not. But there's a lot of organizations at the table, and they're talking about these things. Right? They want to get an incentive for new energy storage facilities in the state. They want to address the RPS budget shortfall. They want to speed up utility interconnection for distributed energy resources. They want statewide siting and permitting for wind and solar standards. They want ICC oversight of more aspects of project development, and then they want a statewide storage property tax assessment standard. This and more. You know, it's never a small bill. You know, Springfield is the, I call it the Consultant Full Employment Act. I mean, no one else is going to read a 900-page bill, but unless you pay them to it, and that's my job. So this and more is going to be in there. So you might want to start thinking about, okay, well, how do we deal with it? Do we put our own proposal forward? And here's a concept that was brought to me by some government folks in another state. And they said, okay, we've decided that we can't keep these things from being built, but what we can do is localize them. So their plan is, they're going to say, we can't stop them, but we can encourage by providing expedited approvals of coupled resources, meaning we're going to have an energy campus. We are going to connect a data center and a solar farm, or a wind farm, or a natural gas generator, or some combination of those, in an appropriate zone within the county. Now, how you come about that and identify that, I don't know. But they're going to try to concentrate it so you don't have a data center over here, and then a solar farm north side of town, and things just kind of surrounding you. That's their strategy. I'm not saying it's a great strategy, but, you know, these are the types of things that I think rational parties can agree, say, okay, well, that's a pretty good approach. Can we do that? Does that comport with how we do things, the legal requirements, et cetera? So my encouragement at the conference was, you might want to start thinking about these things. Veto session's in October. So to the extent you can participate, I think more participation leads to a better result. And I think that's it. How'd we do?
Golden ticket.
Golden tickets. Love those.
You said you had a golden ticket.
Yeah, your pearl, your nugget there. What do you got?
The golden ticket is that in Illinois, there is four counties. I'd say there's a window of opportunity in the next 18 months to get a guaranteed discount on your county utility bills by accessing community solar projects. So if you have a large account, are you Ameren or ComEd territory?
ComEd.
Okay. If you have accounts that are small, meaning less than 100 KW in peak demand, you can essentially get a 10% discount on the entire annual bill, supply, delivery, taxes, and fees. If you have a large account, like a water pumping station, large, right? Something larger than 100 KW, you can guarantee a 10% discount on the delivery charges and taxes and fees. These contracts are 15 to 20 years. They're with projects that are going to be built. They're usually smaller projects, five megawatts in size. There are a lot of them out there. And you all are now the perfect customer. You're a government. You're going nowhere. Your facilities are going to stick around for a long time. And they need buyers to be able to accelerate their development cycles. So you're probably going to get people knocking on your door, saying, hey, we've got this great deal. It is a great deal, subject to contract terms. Right? But we've noticed this already. We run a community solar program for Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, and we've noticed that the traffic of offers has really kicked up up there. So the golden ticket is, I think you can maybe get a little bit of a benefit out of all this kind of murkiness in the market, and it could turn out to your advantage financially.
Are you doing that for municipalities also? I say that because I attended a city council meeting last month. I attended a city council meeting last month, and I think it was Microsoft is building, and it wasn't necessarily going to be local, but they were offering the power off of the, I guess, the grid, and offering it at a pretty good reduced rate.
Yeah, that's a little bit different than community solar, but--
We got a city council member out there.
Nice. Nice. Devils in the details, you know? Read that contract a couple of times.
Yeah.
And, yeah, but these are the opportunities that, yeah, it's a lot of churn and a lot of drama and hand waving and headlines and all that. But I think if you keep a cool head, you can find some good deals. And they're not just one- and two-year deals, they're multi-year deals.
Yeah, it's multiple years.
Yeah. So I'd grab them if you could because I think that you move too much further down the road, number of those projects that are going to be built actually fall as a result of the challenges we see at the federal and state level. And you're just going to have to wait till the next cycle. The question is, are there any ways to lock in against the increase in prices? I know that a lot of these community solar deals are gauged to the utility rate. So as utility rates go up, the credits you receive also go up, the value of those credits. So that's one insurance-adjusted method. We have some, or I have worked with some large industrials who are trying to get out ahead of inflation, and they work with retail energy suppliers, and they can maybe get prices two and three years into the future, maybe a little bit further. But it's really difficult to do that with a regular contract. And what they're doing is they are entering into contracts with wind and solar developers for 15- and 20-year terms through something called a virtual power purchase agreement. They're not delivering the solar or wind to your facility. They're settling up in the market, and eventually you're riding along as a co-investor. And they're doing that for 25%, 30% of their load. And they're using that as a hedge because now I basically have an inflation-adjusted price hedge for 15 to 20 years, and I can't get that when I call my retail energy broker. So those are, you got to work at it, though. Right? If, it's not going to be easy, but you're going to have to. I think there's opportunities in the market. They're all very patient.
Can I ask one question?
Please do.
When we were in Galena, and you spoke about the Texas event, you spoke about the volatility of the supply and the demand, and how close Texas was to a catastrophic event. Can you touch on that just a little bit?
Sure. So let's go back up to the dramatic picture. Image. So, yeah. You see the time scale, starting at 123, going to 203, along the horizontal axis at the bottom. So this all happened in the range of 40 minutes. They went from being in balance at 60 hertz, all the way over on the left, to being below their safety threshold at 59.4 within 30 minutes. They were there for about, let's see, they were below it for 4 minutes 23 seconds. If they had gone another six, or five minutes, 37 seconds, by their own operating rules, they would have had to forcibly shut down more than half of the grid to maintain and bring that balance back up. But it did come back up on its own with load shedding. Load shedding means that large energy users were told, you need to shut down. Right? So refineries, factories, refrigerated warehouses, they all had to go, and most of them were compensated for this, but they were curtailed. And with that curtailment, remember the balance? If I lose my supply, I need to bring down my demand. Well, that's what load shedding is, is bringing that demand down. So they were effective in that. So they're actually doing a lot more of that, planning in that grid, moving forward. And I think it's probably something a lot of other grids are going to start doing as well. It's a great safety measure. Doesn't cost a lot, but it saved them. They were minutes away from having to move towards emergency procedures that cause real chaos.
And if they wouldn't have reacted as quickly, did you say previously that that could have resulted in a full blackout?
Yep. Absolutely.
And how long would that have lasted?
Weeks. No one really knows. You don't know until you try to recover from it. It goes back to, you know, the grid sounds like one big network, but it's actually a network of networks. So you have to isolate each network and bring up that network and its related demand and supply, and then its neighboring network, its demand and supply, and keep them in sync while you bring on all the other networks within the grid. Very difficult.
If you had one recommendation for our county board members here today, what do you think it would be? Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Well, I think learning more is always good. I think this, you know, listen to other people. I'm of a certain age where I know how to be wrong, and I'm comfortable with it. I think I'm pretty right on most of this stuff. But you can have different perspectives, and I would encourage you to listen to those perspectives, and not necessarily look at it from a defensive posture, but to try to find the opportunities. Right? You are, it might not be legally, but you are fiduciaries. You're here with financial responsibility for your residents. So you're making decisions that impact not only, you know, one person's property and the neighboring and adjacent properties, and the view when you're traveling down the road, but it also does, you know, roll up to regional grid reliability. It does get to economic development. It gets to jobs, education, financing schools, you know, and choices. You know, I've worked with some communities that love the concept of a data center. They love it because it's a lot of taxes, not a lot of bodies, not a lot more kids going to the school, not, you know, after construction, not a lot more traffic. You know, the infrastructure costs are relatively low on a running basis. But, you know, some people don't like great big buildings. Right? And what they do. So it's balance. So I guess you got to do what you normally do, which is dig in, find out as much as you can, find some, find the opinions of some people you feel you can trust, and try to make the best of it. But always remember, the market kind of takes care of itself. Not everything is resting on your shoulders. You know, some of these decisions are going to be made by the market. And, you know, market's changing, so you're going to, you know, six months from now, it's going to be a different conversation for you. So just gut it out. You know, read, watch, and listen. Yes, sir?
Just a question on this map here. The generation outages, you have a graph of what shut down and what didn't shut down?
Yeah, I think if you go to that--
I'm just looking at, okay, obviously, the wind turbines shut down, froze up, the solar farms and all that.
Some of them.
I'm just looking at the, you know how you're showing graphs here?
Mm-hmm.
On these outages, what went out?
Everything went out. Coal went out. The coal actually froze in the coal piles. So the, you couldn't move the coal from the coal pile into the boiler. Natural gas froze at the well. When natural gas comes out of the ground, it has quite a bit of moisture. It's de-watered usually. Well, the de-watering process is downstream of where the pump head comes out of the ground. The pump heads were freezing, so gas did not travel into the system. System lost pressure, no gas delivered. Your natural gas power plants don't work. Right? A lot of natural gas peaker plants didn't operate because they're operating, they're operating in uninsulated buildings. They're basically shacks.
So from this point, would, like, you said, the nuclear power plants, that things were freezing up?
Yeah.
I'm assuming that they used their brains, and that ain't going to happen again.
Funny you mention that. There was, so after all this event, of course, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and NERC took a look at this, and they issued a report and said, you did some things wrong. It looks a lot like a report from FERC and NERC from 2011, which basically was the same circumstance. And I haven't seen it, but I know it's out there. There's a similar report from 2000, 2001. So once a decade, they seem to go through this. So it's carrots and sticks, right? A lot of these markets are arranged to say, well, these are rational economic actors. If we provide them an incentive to do the right thing, they'll do the right thing. Not always. Right? That's why they're sticks. And, you know, now we're starting to see some of the wholesale markets decide, we need some sticks. If someone doesn't perform, they need to be punished. They owe a fine, which is blowing the minds of some generators who really don't appreciate that. But fair is fair. Right? If you get the upside, you need to share in the downside. So.
Where do those fines go?
Great question. Probably go to the people who actually performed during those market events. Can you imagine what happened to prices during this period of time?
Yeah.
Skyrocketed. $4,000 a megawatt hour.
Do we have any questions from the general public? So if you, okay, if you'd like to get up and, I don't know if we might come forward and find a microphone here? Get her a microphone? And anyone else after that? Now's the time to ask the questions. We've got the expert here.
Could you go, please, to the slide that showed the state of Illinois?
The debt? Oh, I think I know the one. Tell me if I get this right.
No. The actual state of Illinois where there was encouragement, yes. So if, if this plan comes to fruition, would the generation stay within the footprint of those boundaries? Is that what they're looking to achieve?
Well, to your specific question, no. They don't necessarily anticipate that the power will stay within those regions. They expect that the power would be then distributed throughout the state and the region.
But it would stay within the state? Is there, is there a goal? No.
Not necessarily. There's, you remember when we talked about PJM and MISO and those large regions? Southern Illinois is part of MISO, so technically, an electron that's generated in central Illinois will travel to wherever the load pocket is, meaning it will travel the path of least resistance.
Right, yeah.
So, I'm probably making too fine a point of it, but technically, yes, it'll likely be consumed here, but there's no guarantee that it'll be consumed here. Let's say there's a wind farm generating at full output at 2:00 in the morning, when demand is really low. Very likely that those electrons are going to travel outside of that immediate area.
Right.
However, if it's in the middle of the day and it's generating, it very well might be all consumed within, you know, that local community.
And the exchange is going, the market is going to embrace that concept?
That's how the market works. That's its intent. The, this particular study, the Renewable Energy Access Plan, really is not taking a, it's arguable, they're not looking at reliability, they're not looking at grid stability, they're looking at, "How can we get more renewables in Illinois, because we want more renewables in Illinois, because we have a policy that says we want more renewables in Illinois?" Did that help?
That, that's, yeah.
That's why I teach the class, I do. It's called the Dream Crusher Class by the students, because they come thinking, "Oh, I want to do this," and my job is to say, "No, that doesn't work that way."
Yeah.
So.
And just another, we are very dialed into this industry. With the interests that they have in the onsite nuke plants, the onsite coal plants, and the new technology where they're putting the solar panels in space and transmitting power directly to a receptor, how, when do you, or do you anticipate that being a disruptor to this structure?
That I don't know. I had somebody pitching me on the orbiting mirrors to ground-based receptors back in 2008, I think, is when I was at the CDC.
Their test, their pilot was successful in the spring, and they're putting, I think it's the end of this quarter, production.
Oh. I think that that, you know, there's, I tend to be, and some people say I'm copping out, I'm an all-the-above person, and it's not because I don't want to make a decision, it's because I'm a natural hedger. So, I do energy purchasing for companies. And as I was trying to express, in, you know, in my world, the price always changes, right? So, I can never be 100% right. Every time I buy something today, tomorrow, it's going to be different. So, my goal is not to be 100% right, my goal is not to be 100% wrong. So, I like to have different options all the time, and I want a portfolio of those options, because there are times when gas prices are low. Well, I'd love to have gas generation to get me that low-priced power. There's also times when wind and solar are the lowest-cost resource in the market, and I want that, too. But I also like the lights to turn on, you know.
System.
Right? So, I understand that to get there, I'm going to need some capacity, which means I can turn something on and off, but I also need that energy to flow, and I want it to be at the lowest cost possible. So, I like to have a range of different options, and the challenge that I see in a number of states is that they're reducing the number of options that they're allowing themselves, and I think it's starting to show through in terms of pricing, reliability, and other aspects of the market, that maybe fewer options is not the way to go.
Yes, absolutely. I mean, I'm aware of a local business that their contract for their energy was typically around 3,500 kilowatt, or a megawatt, or what, I forget how the measurement is. Anyway, their contract, they were informed it's going to be 40,000. So, I mean, that has an impact on local businesses when, and when the state is trying very aggressively to control, they have to realize the trickle-down when a company goes from 3,500 to 40,000. That's significant.
Yeah. Yeah, I, my contention, when I speak to policymakers, I say, "Look, two things about consumers. One is they can take good news, they can take bad news, they can't take surprises." You know, so if you have a huge jump in price, that's a real problem. And then, secondly, you know, most consumers only spend maybe six minutes a year thinking about energy. That's the 30 seconds it takes to open the power bill, take it out, determine it's too much, and then they move on to the next thing. Unless it's 3,500 to 40,000, then that's got their attention. So, you know, it's that volatility that's the real challenge, and I think that, again, having fewer options means that you're more exposed to price volatility in those remaining options.
In your presentation, you were talking about domestic supply and the demand in Illinois. When you said domestic supply, were you referring to Illinois as being that domestic supply?
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but at one time, Illinois was a great exporter of energy.
Yes.
And now, my understanding is, we are now importing energy. Is that a true statement, or am I misinformed?
I might give you a little bit more nuanced answer. Every state in these markets is a importer and exporter on a momentary basis. What I think you're referencing is a net exporter or a net importer, that over a year, am I importing more than I'm sending out. Northern Illinois is still a net exporter, largely because of the existing nuclear power plants that generate far more electricity than is consumed in northern Illinois. So, a good portion of that pushes out to the east, into primarily Ohio, northwest Indiana, portions of Michigan.
And...
Central southern Illinois is now an importer. That's largely because of the retirement of most of the large coal plants that used to operate in this region.
How do you foresee this in the future with, I know our policy, looking at taking the remaining coal, and I think I even heard natural gas eventually coming offline, and I know we're going to lose a nuke plant in seven years with about 1,600 megawatts worth of power there. How do you project us to be able to stay, at least in northern Illinois, a net exporter? And I'll let you go with that.
Sure, sure. Well, first, there's no virtue in being a net exporter, net importer. It's more a question of certainty, right? The value to which you value certainty. So, few points. One is that CEJA, the Climate and Equitable Jobs Act, does put a timeline on reductions of emissions from natural gas power plants, and it's a schedule that's based on the location of the plant, its heat rate or its efficiency, and a few other variables. And those reductions need to start, for some of those plants, starting in 2030, and then they ramp down over time. As long as the ramping down those plants does not affect system reliability. So, that's the magic language that made its way into CEJA, is that there's a, there is a way to keep those assets operating if, in their absence, the central southern Illinois grid would become unreliable, as determined by Mid-Continent ISO or MISO. I think that if Illinois maintains its policy, you have a few options. One is, you can reduce domestic consumption, right, through efficiency and load shifting. You can maintain the generation that you have for as long as you can. You can bring in new generation that is capacity-oriented, so that might be the batteries, right? And you can build more transmission from surrounding states that have excess capacity. All of those take time and money, and I think, you know, as I was just probably bored you with, I'm a hedger. I think, yeah, you know, the lights, what was the movie my son's took me to? The Spice Must Flow, right? The Power Must Flow, right? So, there has to be some plan in place that says, "All right, this is what we're doing. We can adjust the plan if required, but we need a plan." And hopefully, the state's moving in that direction. That'd be great.
Have any other questions for Mark? I was utilizing while he's here.
Mark, one of the...
Forward them into submission.
Mark, one of the speakers last Monday was a representative from Ameren. Said they're importing and buying 80% of their power right now, and that that is a definite effect also of the pricing.
Yeah.
So, and that is a direct result of the policies here as well.
Yeah. Well, you know, if you're looking for a model of a market that has had that experience before, you probably could find New Jersey. New Jersey saw an exit and retirement of most of their domestic capacity, such that they were importing from surrounding states, primarily New York, especially upstate New York. And it definitely fed into pricing. You know, when you're an importer, you're just subject to supply and demand in that broader region. You lose that local, when you lose a local market, it's good if you're bringing in cheaper product. If you decimate your local market, well, now you've just opened yourself up to whatever's happening elsewhere. So, it's, there's implications.
Where I'm at, I know they talked about, this was ComEd earlier, a lot of my constituents are Ameren, so.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's a real thing. You know, the cost issues that we heard about earlier, you know, hopefully it doesn't get into reliability issues, hasn't yet, but sometimes there's just not a lot of great options. Maybe new technology comes about, I don't know. That'd be great if one did. I hear every day about small nuclear reactors, and, you know, my question is, my friends at Argon, I'm like, "When do these things come online?" And no one seems to really know, and it's not about the technology itself, it's about the rules about where they can be located. Security, safety, how are you going to dispose of the material? I mean, it's all the boring stuff, right, that makes it tough. And, you know, I hear you chuckle, but, you know, it's how it always is, right? So, we'll just have to see. I'm just paid to diagnose the problem. I don't, I don't solve the problem. That's for the guys down the road.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I would like to thank you very much for your presentation. I think we all learned a bit tonight, quite a bit as a matter of fact. So, thank you for your patience with us and answering the questions, and we appreciate you being here. So, Mark, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your service. Good luck.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
All moved.
Motion by Fannin, second by Mayes, all in favor, signal by...